The regular town board meeting on February 25. I'm going to approve the printed minutes from February 25, 2019.
Second.
Motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Department had concerns. Chief Prebet?
I have something on the agenda already that you mentioned. Also, I have before you a list of equipment that I'm asking the board to declare a surplus, and then it'll be disposed of as per town policy through the auction site that we use. It's three, I think, three or four pages worth of equipment, radios and such. Also, for the board, just for the board's knowledge, we are doing another active shooter drill. We're doing one this Friday with Niagara Reef Field School District. So that'll be involving a multi-agency effort as well. Also, lastly, I don't know if the board is aware, the public's aware, that the drug drop-off receptacle that we have at the police department is one of the busiest in the whole county. We collect a lot of unwanted medication. So what I've decided to do in revamping our policy, what I'm going to do is make it, is change our policy slightly to include seniors that can't get out of the house, that are disabled, and those that are, that are just, can't drive anymore. What we're going to offer is a pickup. So we're going to offer that to the residents that can't make it out of the house. We'll be willing to go pick up the medication from the house so they don't get stuck with it there. They're going to have to schedule that, so it'll be a once-a-month type of thing on the 15th of every month. And I'll just put some personnel on, just dedicated to doing that for an hour, two hours, or however long it takes, depending on what we have. But I thought that was important for the board to know, and I'm going to be doing that, probably enacting that full, in full force by the end of the month, so that we can collect those up.
Real quick, let's move on the list.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve, or to request that the following items in the four pages as printed by the chief are declared excess and authorize him to post same on the auctions international.
Second. Motion second, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Chief, when you have a chance, will you touch base with Jeanette Colasato? He might be a perfect guest speaker for one of the functions at the senior center to present the drop-off spot and the program to pick up. Carol, I'm sure Don will put that in the corner.
Tim Masters? Nothing. Jackie, you're on the agenda. Bill Conrady, deputy supervisor?
Nothing.
Okay. Bob Lanin, you're on the, Jeff Ritter?
Yes, I would like to declare our old board collection, access equipment, we're going to have to give it to the highway department. We need to make all monetary considerations.
How does the highway department feel about that?
I'm willing to take your grant.
For that?
Five hundred dollars?
Five hundred dollars?
Five hundred dollars these days.
Yeah, that'd be a good price.
Okay.
Make a motion to declare.
I'll give you six.
There you go.
Oh, I heard it, I heard it.
Any specifics on the forklift?
Well, we just kind of talked about it tonight. If you remember the last board meeting, we found another forklift, so we moved on it really quick. So this is excess, even though I didn't really have time to prepare, you know, the year and the date of the forklift.
How about make a model? Do you have that?
Well, how about we just make it, approve the sale of the forklift from the sewer department to the highway department, and don't make it excess. Could we do that?
Internal.
Internal, yeah, I guess.
I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, Jeff, you are going to have to find the details on that to give to Jackie for our.
Insurance is in it.
Insurance, yeah.
Yep, I just wasn't prepared for it tonight until Dave brought it up. I said, you know, now would be a good time.
Great, good. Dan Zeno, anything? Nothing? Deep Train?
Yes, let's see. Okay, $100,000 transferred from H-97 to the highway equipment line for purchase of a payloader. I got some money in there, and put the trade-in, and along with lines, had a little bit of purchase of a payloader. Budget tag, we find that purpose in a lease or two, was a buyout, and after we went through the finances, it wasn't, it didn't seem profitable for us to do that one.
Right.
It's just too much for cost. So we went, and we reevaluated everything, and figured it's better off buying one. There are two payloads were bought in 2005. One's already had a rear-end replacement, one's had transmission issues, so we're looking to get rid of the one, just keep the one that we backed already, and a few years down the road, replace that.
Mr. Supervisor, if you're ready for a motion, I'll be one.
Yeah, I spoke to Dave earlier today about it, and he talked extensively about it. I think he probably reached out to a couple of their board members. I don't have any questions.
Well, for the record, we should say that he's clearly self-deep finance.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Dave and I talked earlier today, made sure everything was okay.
Move for approval to use $100,000 from H-97 for the purpose of purchasing the payloader.
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 Second.
Highway department.
We have motion second, and the only thing I wanted to mention, as I know I talked with Dave about it, he talked with the attorneys, that for next year's budget, he's going to try and include some type of a vehicle replacement, because our fleet, as we went over today, is getting quite old.
You mean, Jeff, you went over today? So those equipment, and their dates, years, and approximate cost of everything, and as we go, it's going to give every year. Over the past few years, I'm still on with some equipment that's in the 70s and some of the 90s.
I believe it.
Is this for new, Dave?
This is for new.
Does it have to go off the bid, or?
I'm going to purchase it off a source well.
Oh, okay.
State, state, there.
Okay. So we have motion of second, any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay. Anything else?
That's all, thank you.
Mike Dashenow? Nothing? Okay. Mr. Nagard, anything? Okay. Then moving on, finance.
Couple more budget revisions. First one is to move, excuse me, $19 to the supervisor admin allocation budget from the supervisor personnel service budget.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The second request is to move $5,971 to the budget office admin allocation budget from the junior accountant personnel service budget.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Next is requested to move $203 to the recreation ice rink contractual budget from the recreation ice rink personnel service budget.
So moved.
Second.
Motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
The next one is requested to move $684 to the parks contractual budget from the parks equipment budget.
So moved.
Second.
Motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
The next one is requested to move a total of $2,835 to the B Fund unemployment budget from the B Fund contingency budget.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
We have motion of second.
Discussion?
Yep.
Is this from someone going off on count, or just?
That's from somebody collecting unemployment.
Oh, unemployment?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Next, the request is to move a total of $56 to the highway workers comp budget from the highway general repairs contractual budget.
So moved.
Second.
Motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
And the last one is requested to move $165 to the water department workers compensation budget from the water department administrative equipment budget.
So moved. Second. Motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. So the last we left, that we, we all received this report from GHD, and if everybody had a time to look over the report, Bob, do you want to touch base on the report?
Sure. What I would offer to introduce Karen, she's an engineer from her office, she's an environmental scientist with many, many years of experience in many of the projects under her belt, so she'd be in a far better position as the author of the report to give you a brief overview of the report, and then answer any questions that the board may have.
Okay. You want to stand up at least, or the microphone, whichever?
I don't appreciate it. No, I'm going to hear it.
Okay.
I think you probably hear me. I've never been confused with being one.
Okay.
So just to give you a summary of what we did, GHD has been providing a copy of the travel associates report dated November 1st, 1978, and we did review that report prior to initiating any of our sampling programs. In the report, they summarized how back in the late 70s, two samples had been collected from the intake slash outfall pipes, one sample from each pipe. Those samples were analyzed for metals and for a test called total halogenated organics. That total halogenated organics test had a stipulation where if there was anything that was detected greater than 1 part per million, they would then have to do some additional sampling to speciate and see exactly what exactly was contributing to that. That 1 part per million is not a, was not at that time, nor is it now, a regulatory guideline. It's just a, it was kind of an arbitrary number. Put that into, if you want to take a sample of drinking water now, you would likely have greater than 1 part per million total halogenated organics due to chlorine, disinfection, and fluorination of the water. So that just kind of puts that in, like I said, some perspective for you. The supplemental testing of those samples revealed PCBs at concentrations of 2.1 and 2.6 part per million, as well as lindane at concentrations of .08 and .14 part per million. By comparison, current criteria for those same compounds, PCBs, 1 part per million, lindane is 1.3 part per million. So if we were to compare correctly with today's concentrations, lindane would be well below, the PCBs would be slightly above the current recommended soil cleanup criteria. Now, there's also that I've heard, you know, just in some of the conversations, there's been talk of hazardous waste. Hazardous waste is a very specific definition. You either have to have a chemical, a chemical product that is discarded, that is a waste, a byproduct from a specific manufacturing procedure, or it has to be toxic for certain compounds above certain thresholds. For PCBs in New York State to be considered hazardous, the number is 50 part per million. So that's 25 times greater than what we have, than what they saw back in 1978. For lindane, the concentration would be 1 part per million. So again, 50 to 100 times what the concentrations were back in the 70s that they found in those two outfall pipes. So, you know, as I say, the word hazardous waste has been used. This is by no means hazardous. It was not hazardous then, it is not hazardous now. The other, the other compounds that they had in the samples were metals, and, you know, those had varying concentrations, so, and again, nothing that would have been indeed hazardous, but again, there was, you know, soil chemistry there. So based on this limited knowledge that we had from this report, we didn't exactly know where the lagoons were in relation to the property. We did a representative sampling, we selected 12 boring locations, and we set those out on a staggered grid pattern that gave us a good cross-section of the property. Samples were collected, we had a drill rig out there, a geopro grid, we collected samples from ground surface down to maximum depth of about 11 feet. At each of those locations, we would take a composite sample from about half a foot to a foot below ground surface, down to, you know, down to the full depth of the boring. In most cases, it was usually the zone between 1 foot and 8 foot below grade that was sampled and sent to the laboratory. We did those analyses, and we didn't have any detections of VOCs, or, you know, other than maybe some minor background, you know, very, very low level concentrations, well below criteria, nothing for VOCs, SBOCs, metals, I'm sorry, I did that back, VOCs, SBOCs, PCBs, pesticides. The only thing that we did have was primarily arsenic for the metals. Now, the New York State Part 375 criteria stipulate, you know, we have soil cleanup criteria, the recommendations. The key is you can leave material greater than the criteria in place, provided that the 0 to 2 foot contact zone, where you might have public contact with material, provided that that 0 to 2 foot zone meets the criteria. So again, we had arsenic at concentrations above the Part 375 standards, so we went back and we took a look at that 0 to 2 foot zone. We sampled those half dozen locations that we had the elevated arsenic at, and of those, only one location, location two, still exceeded the Part 375 criteria. At that point, we took our results, we had some discussions with the DEC, had a conversation with them, kind of laid out what we had done, what we were finding. They were able to provide us some additional information from the stream disturbance permit that was issued for this work back in 1980. As part of that permit, they had design drawings of the lagoons. They also had those tied into some landmarks. They showed the wet well, which is the outfall monitoring point, which is still there on the site today, as well as the storm sewer manhole that runs through that area, and those were able to be measured off, the lagoons were being able to be measured off from those locations. We also used those locations to triangulate our sampling points, and then we laid the two drawings over one another. Our locations tied into those manholes, and when we lined everything up with the construction drawings from 1980, out of our 12 bore holes, two were within the lagoons. Location nine was in the east lagoon, location 10 was in the west lagoon. We took some additional samples then to ensure that we were good in that 0 to 2 foot contact zone. We did, so we did 9A and 9B, well, we actually went back to the original location of nine, collected another sample from the 0 to 2 foot zone, as well as 9A and 9B, and then the same thing at location 10. We went back to original location 10, sampled the top two feet, as well as at 9A and 9B. Of those, we did have exceedance of arsenic at one of the locations, and actually, I thought it was the original location, SB9. So that would be another, another point that would have to be managed. If you have impacts within that upper two feet, the key is avoiding any public contact. So you can either put another two feet of clean material on top of it, or you could take it and use some other imperious barrier, put parking lot over the top, a roadway, a building, a concrete slab associated with a shelter, or something like that. So we felt that those two spots, SB2 and then SB9, could be managed without having to do any, you know, any removal of material, managed in place, and incorporated into the design of the park. We prepared our report, provided it to the town. The town also then sent a copy to New York State DEC region 9. DEC reviewed the report and essentially didn't have any comments. Their only comment was, you know, there's nothing out here that would, you know, cause us concern that we would have to put it into a regulatory program. So from that point, you know, we feel that the site is well characterized. So if you have any questions, I can open any direct questions. I know you've had an opportunity to review the report.
Could you repeat that? I just found my pen.
Watch it on TV.
Who's recording?
John, do you have any questions?
No, I have some comments afterwards, but.
Okay, Rob, do you have any questions?
Yeah, Mike, my problem with the way the drilling was done, I'd be looking against conservatory side, there's only two drills in the, two.
Lagoons.
Lagoons, I'm sorry, what was it? I'd like to see additional testing in the lagoons and the sides and in front going towards the water. Nothing was done going towards the water as far as drainage, and that's where your water, your underground chemicals would do, or whatever it is that's there.
And I guess the other thing, too, we didn't really, due to the absence of chemistry at the site, you know, you mentioned drainage and water, you know, due to the absence of chemistry, we really didn't see any, any point in looking at groundwater. It wasn't a medium of concern.
That's just my thought on it. I'm just, I would have liked to see more testing, and I still would like to see a little more testing done in that area.
Any other questions?
Anything from you?
No.
I'm in complete agreement with, with Rob. On the west end, between the lagoon and the, and the water's edge, at least two, possibly three boring samples taken there. Whether you found chemistry or not, over the course of, since 1980, 30 some years, close to 40 years, if anything were to be leaching out, the natural flow of water in the ground would take it towards the river, I assume. And that coincidentally happens to be the place where people would be gathering, down by the waterfront. And I'd like to be able to say to the people, you know, we did all the tests, we knocked it out of the park, and that's where I stand on it. And the other thing that I'd like to see is, if the thing went bad, like five years down the road, 10 years down the road, we discovered that we hadn't done enough testing or whatever, some of the questions would be, they'd say, who are the idiots who just let this go with inadequate testing? Well, this is more than adequate if we do this next series of testing. And the next thing they might say is, who are the idiots who didn't put this through their own environmental commission, a committee? I think we should, we have an environmental committee, put it through there, so that we've doubted all the eyes and crossed all the t's.
Okay. Al?
Just this quick question about protocol. You were saying that two of the borings were within the lagoons, correct? After you kind of did the overlay?
Yes.
And then you went back and did a 2-foot sample of that. Is there any, any sense to going back and going down the full eight feet at those, or are you relying on the 2-foot cover in order to justify the test?
We had already done the full, the full vertical.
Eight foot? I see, okay.
We'd already done the full vertical sampling at 9 and 10.
I understand.
And then we went back to.
And retested the first two?
Yes.
I understand, okay. So if there were any additional testing, it would be within, I would imagine the lagoon area would be the focus, correct?
That would probably make the most sense.
That's what I'm thinking, because those are the two sites where you found the arsenic?
Well, 9, we found arsenic, we also found arsenic at 2. Now, and again, that's, you know, it's in the shallow zone.
I understand.
You get, it could be from more.
I understand.
It could be from, you know, agricultural, you know, overspray.
Right.
Who knows? It's been a.
And your, and your results have said, have all been under the limits as, as you've found it thus far, correct?
With the exception of those two shallow samples at 2 and at 9, everything else within the 0 to 2 foot.
So those, we can kind of, look at those as kind of the hotspots, at least.
Yeah, and, and again, when you stay hot in there.
Fair enough.
In the one location, I'm not sure.
It's all relative.
It's like 17 versus 16. It's very, very.
I understand.
You know, very, very minor exceedances, so that's why we don't have any, you know, any concerns about managing that material undercover on site.
Do you have any concerns with the fact that the burms are so much higher than the road next to it, and the design?
Which, I'm sorry.
Well, the access road, isn't the access road somewhat lower than the burms next to them?
That hasn't been laid out or filed design, but the access road coming, you mean, the road coming in as part of the park?
Yeah, yeah, it's part of the park.
That hasn't been designed yet.
Okay.
There was a general, there was a general concept, you know, but we can change it, we can tweak it. What Bill and I talked about, and I think everybody else would be on board, is sometime probably in April, hosting a public information at the senior center, if this, if our next set of testings come back. Because addressing that, Bill, real quick, do you have any other questions?
I just have one. The term more testing is vague. How could we be more specific of what we're looking for? What we're looking for, five more borings at a certain depth? I want to be complete. I want to make sure that this is all resolved.
Right.
It's the right thing to do, take no action tonight except ask for more testing. What should we be asking for?
And I mean, we can probably, I'm turning it down, with more testing, you know, you expressed concerns about the area between the lagoon and the river, we can do two bore holes, we can do, you know, I don't know that there's any, any merit to it, because we've already tested the lagoons, but, you know, I mean.
Well, just.
I would limit it, I would say that, you know, we would do up to a maximum of, say, five bore holes. And, you know, we can lay that out, and I'm not quite sure exactly how, you know, we probably have to get a proposal with the cost and ask the town.
Yeah. Well, the reason I was asking about the road, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
The reason I was asking about that, because you had mentioned something about the runoff not really being an issue, at least in your mind, based on what you, the chemistry that you found.
Yeah, not, not runoff, I mean, there's.
Groundwater, I apologize, groundwater.
Surface water, okay.
And maybe those are different things, and I, that's why you guys are the experts, because I certainly don't know the first thing about it. But the, as I'm learning, you know, I just want to make sure that the, they're both looked at in the same, in the same vein, if you will. So, and that's why I was thinking of the topography of the land, with the road being lesser than where the burms are now, at least where they were proposed. I was just wondering whether that was an issue for you, but it doesn't seem like.
Yeah, no, it's not going to be, yeah.
Previously, we authorized our engineer firm to hire someone to do testing, but that was passed. Does that resolution still hold?
His firm did the test, GHD did the test, correct?
Yeah, there was actually a couple of different types of tests. There was, if you remember, several months ago, there was the Phase 1A and Phase 1B archaeological testing that was done by Morten, okay?
Yes.
Don't you refer to?
That was archaeological testing, that was not chemistry.
Environmental. Do we need to have a specific resolution with an amount of money to be able to do this tonight to move forward?
Well, I, I think, in getting to where, I talked, I talked to Rob, I talked to John, I talked to Al, and I spoke with you. And again, I'm going to state that we, we as a board do not want to put a park on a property where it shouldn't be. I'd be the first one to say, if we found something down here, forget it. At least we have documentation that if future boards down the road want to do something with the property, we know, we've done the due diligence to have it to where nothing should be there. Having said that, though, I will support Rob Morial, and John, and Al, and Bill's decision to do more testing at the site. I talked to Bob Lanin today, we were, we talked, I think you said about like six borings would be about $15,000 to $18,000 roughly? Ballpark?
Yeah, 12 to 15, probably.
Okay, so what Bob said he would need is some recommendations on where we would do that boring now.
Can I ask a quick question? I mean, in line?
Yeah.
Before I lose my point, I mean, would it make sense to involve the DEC, the Department of Health, those types of agencies to kind of get a consensus? Because they're the experts.
They already signed off on DEC.
No, but I mean, where the next six should be, if we're going to talk about six to make sure that, that those bores are in the right place?
How about request a plan and look at the plan before going?
Hold on a second, hold on a second. So, go ahead.
And let me just say one, Diane, and one of the things, too, with the agency, with the DEC, they only do as much.
Excuse me?
They only do so much to the extent that a site is in a program.
I see.
So the site does not qualify for super fund.
Thank you.
It's not a brownfield site.
Right.
So they don't have a real mechanism to, you know, be fully engaged in the process. They do, you know, they'll do a courtesy review and say, no, you know, it's, that's it, you know, as they tend to say, they're not the dirt police. So as long as we are, you know, following the guidelines, and the concentrations are within, you know, you know, the appropriate ranges, and, you know, slight exceedances, we're able to manage the risks on site, and we do it according with the, according to the regulations, there's really no, you know, the agency isn't going to get involved. What regulations?
What, what regulations do you have?
Hold on a second, you can speak at the end. She, she's not going anywhere. I guess what we could do is, we can approve GHD moving forward to do more testing, working with the board. You guys had a specific, couple of specific locations. You wanted to see more testing in the lagoons.
Well, the lagoons are just around the outer edge.
And then you wanted to have some more, I don't know if you need to do drilling or maybe the, the two feet down by the, I, I don't know, I'm, I'm actually, maybe we could work out some recommendations.
Oh, I forgot your name.
Kathy.
Kathy. And Kathy, we mentioned that the west end, and she, she threw up two being a reasonable mile. I think two at that end between the river and the end of the lagoon. And then, just a, it doesn't seem like we sampled the lagoon itself enough, either one.
Was that, I mean, let me ask, is that a decision we need to make tonight?
No.
As far as exactly where? Can we just basically commission GHD to do more testing?
Subject to-
Brian?
I would, I would say, if you have to do anything tonight, ask your engineers to go back and do some, some planning and some looking at, if you're going to do more testing, where does it make sense to do? Present a plan to you at a future meeting to look at. And that's all you do tonight. And then, at some future meeting, you can either approve or ask them to revise whatever plan they come up with.
Do you think it'd be premature to, to feed some of this information through our environmental commission?
Well, they're going to, they're meeting tomorrow night, and they're going to go over-
Oh, they are going to look at.
Yeah, they're going to have this report to go over tomorrow night.
Will GHD be there?
GHD is not going to be available to be there. She, she cannot be available tomorrow night. That's why, that's why I invited, hold on, that's why I invited the environmental commission to come tonight. So she's available, the environmental commission, Mr. Wolfgang's here, to go over any questions that he may have tonight.
Well, what about rescheduling the meeting when she's available? So that the environmental commission has the benefit of having a conversation with her?
Well, I asked the environmental commission to come tonight.
Tonight's not conducive to a conversation about a sampling again.
Well, well, like I said, we can work on that, we can work on that afterwards through GHD, the board, and, and the environmental. So, yeah, we'll, we'll work on that with, like I said, with GHD. So, well, then moving forward, you will ask GHD then, we need a motion, do we, Brian? So, make a motion.
Not before public comments, please. No, no votes on this before public comments, please. You just drop the report, last, last meeting.
Okay. You, you can have your public comments at the end, so we'll, we'll move it, we'll, we'll, we're not voting. So we're going to, we're going to do more testing, okay?
Would like public comments before any decision is made.
That, and that's at the end, that's, that's at the end of the meeting?
Understood.
Okay. So we will ask for further testing with GHD. So moving forward on that, streetlight charge. Missed a little bit.
Mr. Allen's raising his hand if you want to write your-
Oh, I'm sorry.
Could I ask Kathy a question?
Absolutely, you can.
Okay. When the sampling was done, was it done at various times of the year because migration of chemicals and stuff is, is different in the spring when it's really wet and all the snow's melting and so on versus maybe like late summer when it's real dry? Have they spaced out?
This, this is just straightforward site characterization soil testing. So the initial testing was done, I believe, in July or August, with supplemental testing then all the way into October. So between July and October, there were three rounds of sampling that concluded. And again, it's soil testing, so what's in your soil is, you're going to have residuals. And again, it wasn't, concentrations were very, very low all across the country. Significant.
Go ahead, Mr. Wolfgang.
You invited us here to give more information. We had asked that, that Kathy come to our meeting. We've been discussing this for about five months. Mr. Guyven has been bringing information to us about the park and about the testing. Amy Wichrow was very kind to come with us to talk about the DEC, former DEC foreman, who monitored the, this project when they had these disposal sites on that property. Kathy mentioned the pipe and, and how you had reports of what was in the pipe with the testing. The property itself, two feet, I, we don't believe, I'm talking about the environmental commission, two feet down is enough, right? Thank Mr. Jacoby for bringing it up. We have discussed it. We discussed the two sites that they covered, all right, when they had found the problems. They, they, they actually buried and then covered, all right? All we're saying is, if you're going to be doing this and you're very much concerned about the public, is two feet far enough? Some of the depth of the drilling went down eight feet. What was found in those places that there were eight feet down, all right? I don't have the report, so I can't tell you that.
Well-
Let me finish, please.
Okay.
If, if we were going to be concerned about the movement, as Jim just mentioned, about the movement down there out to the water, we know some of this is, is leaked into the water, all right? There was testing years ago on the water site, as you probably are aware, that the town did. And that arsenic chemical was involved in that because of farming. We're not sure what was put into that pile by, by DEC knows when they covered it up. Is there a report, what DEC has, of what was there before? I don't, we don't know that, we haven't seen that. If DEC is, is involved, and I, I don't mean to say that DEC has accepted this report, it's been received and filed, has a representative of DEC spoken with the town concerning this project, all right? A current member, up to date, giving them information? Have they been asked that?
Yeah. Real quick, you've asked three questions, so before you ask a fourth and a fifth, do you want to address the first two?
And I may have missed one in there. As far as the, the depths of the sampling, every one of the 12 locations was sampled, we sampled the full vertical horizon, okay, from one to eight feet or one to a hundred, depending on what the, what the final depth was. The only thing we found in those samples, as I say, was arsenic. And we went back then to ensure that the top two feet had no chemistry. And that was the point, you know, that was the point of the characterization. We're not sampling two feet and two feet only, but like I said, we went back to those locations to ensure that the top two feet was clear after identifying or not identifying chemistry within the full vertical horizon.
Okay. And then you had a second question. Is, I know, the third question's about the DEC, but was there, I, I don't know if a report-
There were no reports. The agency has nothing on it.
Right.
The only thing that they were able to provide to us was the lagoon construction drawings that were part of it. They have no other-
And that's, and that's in 1980 that you're referring to?
Yes.
Okay. And then the third question, we received a let, well, the third question is, we received a letter from DEC which was provided and filed by Donna Garfinkel. It is filed here at the town, where they have basically no opinion, correct? They have no involvement. I don't have it in front of me, so I don't want to misquote it. Do you have it?
I do, give me a second.
Want to go ahead and read it? Go ahead, read it.
Letter dated February 5th, to Mr. Stephen Broderick. Littlefront Park Site Characterization Report, January 2019. New York State Department of Environmental Conservation has received and reviewed the reference report. The data results indicate that this property would not qualify for the New York State Superfund Registry. If you have, please contact me at this number if you have any questions. Assigned by Stanley Radon, professional geologist, regional remediation geologist for New York State DEC Region 9.
And also, you had a conversation with the gentleman that Mr. Wolfgang's referring to who used to be with the DEC?
Mr. Greg Sutton.
Greg Sutton. And what was his response?
Mr. Sutton, well, we spoke to him about it. Kathy and I both had a conference call with him, and he is familiar with the site, okay? But said he was not on the site during the lagoon, or during the lagoon construction and the dewatering, but he was at the wastewater treatment plant, which is very close to the sewer force, overseeing the construction of that project.
Okay.
He was not on the Riverfront Park.
So he does not have firsthand knowledge on, on that site?
That's, that's what his comment was, and he referred us to Stanley Radon.
Okay.
Who we had been working with, you know, throughout this process.
Okay. And go, go ahead now. I wanted to get those questions answered before you moved on.
I, I think the whole project needs to, to come to us, and we would like to agree that, all right? We have concerns. We do have an attorney on our, on our, on our commission, who I thought might, might be able to hear tonight, who had asked a lot of questions, and in fact, had asked me several times, and Mr. Guyven can, can vouch for this, to bring Mr. Sutton to our meeting, all right? Mr. Sutton is not going to come to, you know, the environmental meeting. So we were seeking information anytime we could get it, all right, beyond what Mr. Guyven was giving us. And we're very much concerned still with putting the public on the property without knowing exactly that there is nothing buried there that would harm them.
Right. So are we, and that's why we're going to ask for more testing. So, okay. Anybody else from the environmental wish to speak?
I want to just finish. We're still going to meet tomorrow night. It still doesn't solve the problem if you're going to be postponing the approval of this report. We still would like to have Kathy or Lannan or both to come to our meeting then next month. Or we can create a special meeting to have them come when they're free.
Okay. Thank you. So moving on, the streetlight charge, Big Vista, Little Vista, that would be Councilman Morial.
Yes, we got a estimate for a streetlight charge for Big Vista, Little Vista. It's a hundred watt pressure sodium lamp, and I was talking about to Mr. Lannan on that. And Bob, you were saying that the street, the portable streetlights that aren't on a pole, they don't have-
Like the, like the single model poles, there, I've asked about the LED option, and they, at the moment, are not offer that. They do offer that, though on like the existing, like telephone poles, utility poles, they'll put an LED on that, but according to that grid, they're not quite there yet with, with this particular pole. And so, not at that need.
So it's an annual cost of $283.39. We, for a motion on that, is that what we're doing tonight?
Well, if, if the board decides to move forward with the installation of the light, I would need to submit a certified resolution that the board passes, of course, back to National Grid, so they will then put it in their, in their pipeline to, to, for design and construction.
Do we have a supervisor? I've been in favor of this streetlight from the beginning, but I would rather take no action on this than do it the old fashioned way when the new generation is coming up. I'd say, take no action right now, and let's wait for the new pole and the new light.
What do you mean, high light bulb, what you're talking about?
Well, through the better, the brighter light, the LCD.
Well, National Grid doesn't offer that, so we'd have to wait for night bulb. That's dragging along, that's, what do we think, Stephen?
Probably sixteen months minimum.
But, but if, if when we own all our streetlights and we go to install a streetlight there, is anything going to change? Would we be able to put an LED light in then?
Yeah, if you want to change a luminaire from high pressure sodium to LED, and it's yours, that, that will be an option for you in the future.
So it is available, if, not through National Grid, but it is available?
Yep. Yeah, it would be a-
But they would put up the pole regardless, so we want the pole.
Well-
What, what costs are we incurring because we're doing this?
$283.39 forever, every year.
So-
We'd have to buy it out.
But if it comes to the point where the poles are ours, we would have to put up the light.
No, they won't be ours.
Well, not the poles, the lights.
Yeah. Well, when, when we make that transition, we could change the bulb, basically.
The head, do the head, the lantern?
It's, it's, I, I think we should put it up and give those people the light they want. It's, it's not, it's not a huge cost factor here.
Is he correct in that we could put a, this light up and change it later?
Yeah, what they would call is a change of luminaire. That's what they would do, change.
Okay.
You're going to have to buy this pole from National Grid.
National Grid.
Right.
Right.
They're looking for it now.
It's a coach light, so it's not a, it's not a Cobra.
Oh.
Yeah.
I know that far.
Like, like you remember, we pulled in at Highway Drive.
Yeah.
Last year, year before, and one in Legacy and Creek, you know. So there's been various styles throughout the, you know, last several years that's been put in. This one is proposed to be identical to the one that's on Big Vista and Little Vista on, on the first D intersection as you're coming off, off the ditch. This one is at the end.
When we buy it back from them, ultimately, will it cost us a lot of money to buy that pole?
You know, I'm not that familiar with the whole life of buyout program, to be honest with you. I know other towns have considered it, and some are further ahead than others.
Yeah.
Well, here's what I can tell you. If you don't put the pole now through grid, and then you do take action and you're now in the streetlight business, then it's going to be up to the town to put it.
Yeah, we should get this-
Yeah, we don't move it.
If you, if, that's one option. The other option is to have grid put it in now, or, or whenever you like, and then at some point in the future, should you take over the streetlights, then you have the option then to swap out the high pressure sodium that's there, that's been there throughout the town, and just swap it out with an LED luminaire.
Okay.
All right, I'll go for it.
Okay. So-
Motion approved as presented?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So then you'll come with a resolution and-
Actually, this was, that's final resolution for this is all we'll need-
Okay.
For the town clerk.
Okay.
Take that to grid and open it, and put it in there on their schedule.
Okay. Thanks, great. The WPCC Sludge Dewatering Improvement Bits.
Apparently, there's been three projects with this dewatering improvement down at the wastewater treatment plant. Would you like me to just kind of list the low bidder?
Sure, yeah, there's a, what, yeah, I don't know.
Okay. Apparently, there's, there's three contracts. One is for the general contractor. Quackenbush came in at the lowest bid at $577,000. For heating and ventilation, John W. Dansforth came in as the low bidder at $64,300. And Ferguson Electric, for the electrical contract, came in as the low bidder at $56,700. And so, I believe we probably would need to make these motions individually to-
We had a question. Did you?
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead. Earl, we had a question.
Steve, what happened was, in that lower left-hand corner on that sheet, the $815,000, that was the engineer's estimate. And so those, that figure didn't mean anything, that was just his estimate, so it came in substantially below that.
Oh. Okay, there was a question that was raised earlier, so, okay, so-
Make the motion to approve Quackenbush Company Incorporated as the general construction contractor for the sludge dewatering improvement, improvement to the Water Pollution Control Center.
Second.
I'm sorry, the amount of $577,000, apologize.
Second.
With motion of second, any more questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Move to award John W. Dansforth the heating and ventilation contract for the sludge dewatering improvements at the Water Pollution Control Center.
Second.
At the amount of $64,300.
Second.
With motion of second, any questions on the matter? All in favor?
Aye.
Move to award the electrical contract for the sludge dewatering improvements to the Water Pollution Control Center to Ferguson Electric, and the amount is $56,700.
Second.
Motion of second, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
And then Bob had some comments.
If I may, if I could ask the board to consider passing a resolution that allows a supervisor to execute those contracts, whether you will need approval?
I would so much.
A little bit of time?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Mr. Supervisor, for the record, do you want to state that the funding is already in place without, through this, Bob?
Yeah, funding is from H-32, which is money that we had borrowed for upgrades.
Very good.
Okay. Thank you very much. The WPCC Greater Buffalo Environmental Conference.
Jeff has asked that we send four people to the Greater Buffalo Environmental Conference on Tuesday, March 20, I'm sorry, March 19th, at the cost of $135 each, total of $540. Funds to come from SS1-8110, decimal, four zero zero, ISO MO.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Sandborne Fire Company, Lewis and Town Board members, the Sandborne Fire Company Incorporated here with submits for active membership and said Fire Company is the name of Caitlin Hoover, address 6030 Hoover Road, Sandborne, New York, 14132.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then Chief Prevent, his generator issues. Chief?
We, unfortunately, when the power went out and school was dismissed, our generator kicked in as it was supposed to and did not transfer any of the power in. The power transfer switch subsequently, we found out, has gone bad. We had somebody come out and take a look at it, and they said because of where it was originally installed, the conduit comes into the top of the box. It shouldn't be, it should be on the side or the bottom, because all the water cells on the top, they'd sealed it with silicone, water got in there, and we believe that's the culprit. The part alone was close to $5,000 or $6,000 to replace the power transfer switch. The generator is a $30,000 generator that we have that we got through grant money previously, and the problem that we have with that is, everybody was calling, actually Donna called me, and Tim was trying to call. When we lose that, we lose our radios, we lose the phones, and we lose the power of the server. The server power backup is only about a half an hour's worth. So what I'm looking for is, I have one quote already from the one company. Problem that I'm having is that because it's a liquid-cooled industrial generator, I had a number of people come out for a quote, and they could not give us a quote on it because you have to be certified for that type of generator. So talking to Mr. Seaman, what I'm looking to do is hopefully get the board's approval. I have the one quote, it's going to be around what they estimated, but I'm looking for to replace the power transfer switch and to correct whatever the conduit, to get it to the side or to the bottom.
The generator's still good.
Generator's good. Generator has no problems at all, except for the power transfer switch.
Right, right.
So what I'm looking to do is, to avoid having to do this in two weeks and perhaps, possibly a month down the road, is, Mr. Seaman said one solution would be to get the board's approval to accept the lowest bid out of the three that we received.
According to our two towns-
And then subject to the attorney's approval, once that is, once that's submitted, I'll submit that to Mr. Seaman, and he can take a look at whatever it is. The jeopardy that we have is, I might lose my whole server if the power goes out, and again, we have no radio communications or telephone communications whatsoever.
I make that motion.
Second.
Any questions?
Funding from?
H-97.
H-97.
It's not, I don't, without replacing the whole generator, I don't think we can use NIPA money.
Jackie said, I did talk briefly with Jackie about, she said it's pretty much the same place anyway. H-97 with the NIPA.
H-97 is for safety.
Public safety.
Thank you.
There's a couple different funds that it might be. You don't have to specify what's funded.
At this time?
It's possible that the hydro allocation fund would be appropriate for it. We have to look at that.
Because it's-
Because it's an energy cost, so that's a possibility.
That's what I was hoping for.
Yeah. So for tonight, the dollar figures we're talking about is not a bid scenario. It's less than a bid, so you just require you get some proposals. So what you'd be doing is authorizing him to accept the lowest proposal after he gets the requisite amount of their proposal.
Okay. So we have a motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. Thanks, Chief. Recreation fund allocation, Morell.
We did that, we would the-
We did take care of that with the budget division.
Okay.
That we took care of.
Okay. Privilege of the floor, public concerns, nobody signed up.
Can we say something first?
Pardon?
Can I have a chance?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. We received a letter from National Fuel. Bob, this is probably more to you in regards to, they want to know if we have any improvements coming within the town, they would like to know about it. Will you communicate to them about our water project?
Have you seen that letter?
I just did the same.
You got it?
Yeah.
Okay.
I read it through a couple of times, and it just wasn't really clear who's supposed to notify them, and it sometimes does things get lost.
Annual letter, in the tentatious form.
Right. Before you talk about upcoming meetings, Jerry, are you going to meet tomorrow night?
Yes.
Do you have other items on the agenda?
Seven o'clock, Jerry. Yes.
Mr. Bax will be there. He'll unlock the door in a timely fashion for you.
Okay. So privilege of the floor, public concerns. Go ahead now. Go ahead now. No, no, go ahead. That's a present.
I don't think I have enough time to go through all of the omissions in the report that you just heard, but I have two basic concerns. The quality of the sampling that was done. There was no sampling and analysis plan despite the fact that I asked Mr. Broderick at the Greenway meeting back in September three times if there would be a sampling and analysis plan prepared before sampling was conducted. The other concern I have is what seems to be omission or concealment of information from the board, from the public, from the Greenway Commission, even from the DEC, every step of the way on this project. And again, I don't have time to go into detail tonight, but in light of Mr. Guyven's comment two weeks ago that we're talking about sill that came out of the river in the 1970s, this Cryboll report indicted the sampling that was done at the time that Kathy reviewed with you. Today's DEC indicted that sampling because of the way it was collected and the analysis of that sampling was limited because of the expense at that time. But let me read you from that 1978 Cryboll report, which I sent Mr. Lannan and the board on June 4th, and which Kathy thought to summarize. Quote, "It appears that chemical solutions were illegally dumped into this structure over a period of time, and because of the relative low velocity of liquid passing through these large pipes, that the material settled out in the two to 60-inch pipe rather than be carried into the river. Based on our present knowledge, the point at which the chemicals were introduced into the outfall structure can't be determined. The illegal dumping could have originated at the intake well, pump building, along the 42-inch line, or at the old ordinance works, which is now the site of SCA, formerly Chemtrol, of course, now known as CWM. Using the proposed schemes for additional testing, it is anticipated that the extent of the contamination can be more closely identified." I totally agree that before spending another dime, and it looks as if that already $35,000 in public money has been invested, we never got a sampling and analysis plan. This characterization report doesn't even comply with DEC regulation as to the due diligence, and if we get more sampling in areas that Mr. Morell and Mr. Jacoby proposed, given the way the sampling was conducted, you're still going to get sampling that either doesn't characterize the contamination or is diluted. Therefore, before spending another dime, I think Mr. Seaman's remarks of caution were very wise. Let's stop, let's figure out what the next step should be, whether or not the town should even invest more money and find something that could be very expensive to clean up, or could be, because once you find it, you can't just say, well, we're going to leave it alone and turn away and not do our part. You're going to have the liability if you do sampling that does in fact trigger any sort of brownfields requirements in the state. So I'm all in favor of doing the characterization. If you want to spend the money, it would be great to clean up that site if there's a problem. It would be great to find out if there's not a problem. But I have zero confidence, and I'll leave it up to the environmental commission to weigh in, I have zero confidence in a characterization report that did not comply with the standards you use before you even get the test results, and then ask the same firm that's telling you this site is safe and appropriate to go back and do some more. I would ask the board to perhaps consider having an independent firm that specializes solely in brownfield sites, or at least find some agency that will look at a sampling and analysis plan for you and determine whether or not it fully characterizes the site, because all of the Part 375 requirements that have been quoted to you are for remediation of sites that have been fully characterized, and certainly, what was done here does not fully characterize the contamination. Any reasonable person can go to that site, look at the size of that berm, see how much larger it is than the permit construction footprint that was overlaid in the GHD report, and say, my gosh, virtually the entire park is going to be atop this burial. Cryboll wanted to know in 1980, what's down there? It should be fully characterized, it never was, and you have to decide with your counsel or experienced brownfield counsel whether you even want to go any further, whether it's worth it. Two boards before you in the past 20 years decided, no, they thought it was too much risk to the town. In any case, I look forward to going through the report in more detail. There are many, many questions and flaws in the report and the detections that were conveyed to you tonight, but by the report, there were many, many more detections in the actual report that was given to you. And unfortunately, even though the supervisor sent it to the DEC on January 25th, and with a cover letter that copied the board, I didn't see the board get a copy of this report until two weeks ago, when this presentation was initially supposed to take place. Last but not least, the permit documents that were finally retrieved from DEC some in October, after two rounds of sampling had been conducted, not before, certainly showed that the burial was very consistent with Mr. Sutton's recollection. So whether or not he was there during the construction, it was in fact on the south side of the property, in the flat part of the property, a little closer to the river than it was to the road. So I would also caution the board that any hearsay, if not very carefully accompanied in writing from the DEC, or the Department of Health, and the Department of Health, I would encourage you to get that. And also, the letter that Mr. Lannan read you, it was based, it was a comment from DEC only on the data that they looked at, not whether or not it fully characterized the lagoons, not whether or not the protocol was appropriate, not whether or not composite samplings would dilute the detections that you were looking at and measuring against those standards. So I'll stop here because, just to talk about that report and all of the items and all of the questions, would take a good hour, and that's a good reason to send it through a committee that looks at sampling and analysis plans as Mr. Allen and Mr. Wolfgang have over many years. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Whitro. Mr. Wolfgang?
Go ahead, give your conclusion.
Did you get the report?
No. Got a report presented to us by an internet, Seeger's Department of Energy.
Okay, I have to do it this way.
One, it's pretty down?
No, that's okay. They do this to me all the time.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Sweet.
Thanks, Dave. Mine isn't as well-done, maybe. Mine's kind of simplistic here. Mr. Wolfgang, how long have you been discussing this issue?
About five months.
Five months. In five months, we couldn't make, we couldn't plan a meeting for Mr. Lannan to attend the environmental commission, to answer their questions. I find that hard to believe. Now, I just asked Mr. Wolfgang as I walked up here, he had a copy of the report. He said he got the report.
By an internet, who sent a copy to us.
Email, via email after the last meeting, after we-
Because it's on the website now.
Right.
And I thank you for that, when I asked you to put that on there. Seeger's not up there, I wish you would put the Seeger up there. The other question I have is, you mentioned, and I might have misunderstood you, did you say there was a conceptual plan with regards to the road or something?
Yes. It was presented-
Do you have a design or a plan?
Yeah, it was presented, it was presented at the Greenway meeting.
Okay, so it would be in that package?
It would be in the Greenway, yeah, if you go to the Niagara River Greenway, it's there, and we have it here at Town Hall as well.
Now, the other thing that I found interesting was, there's two names for this project.
We haven't-
On the front, it says-
We haven't put a name, we haven't put a name on it.
Well, on the front, it says, it says Riverfront Park, but when you go through the Test America things, it's called a kayak launch park. What is it?
Well, we haven't named it yet. So right now, it's just a Riverfront Park. Lower River Road, Riverfront Park.
Will it primarily be a kayak launch site?
No, it's going to be a park that may contain a kayak launch. You know, we're all have to go through, Bob, we have to go through DEC.
Army Corps for-
Yeah, Army Corps Engineers. And if they determine that we can't do it there, it'll just be a town park.
Okay.
Whether it'll have the kayak launch or not. We hope to have a kayak launch there.
I knew that somebody from GHD shows up at this meeting tomorrow night, because I think I alerted you guys to this back in April via editorial, and I alerted you to it. I think you all got a copy of that 1970 report, where we said there was quite a bit of hazardous waste, and unless there was an act of conception, that hazardous waste is still there.
You're talking about the report that Ms. Whitro gave us from November of '78. Okay. Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Supervisor, just one clarification. Most brownfields and superfund sites in the state of New York that require remediation do not contain primarily hazardous waste with a capital H. Nevertheless, our department from DEC consider them a risk to public health, and that's why they need to be cleaned up. So it's really splitting hairs to say, well, is it hazardous or not hazardous? It's contaminated, so the question is, is it dangerous or not dangerous?
Thank you. Mr. Wolfgang?
I really came for a separate purpose. The French Landing Development had had an accident, one of our light posts was knocked down, and I did report it to the clerk, but after talking with some of the neighbors, they're concerned that sometimes people are speeding through the section. The light post was on a turn, and I don't know, I know the hybrid carries do plows it, so it's been plowed regularly. They must have slid off and knocked the pole down. Knowing the cost of the poles, since I had to put them in, I know we don't want to have that happening all the time, so I guess we need to just have a little more concern as to the traffic coming through there.
Okay, thank you. Would anybody else like to speak? Would you like to, anybody from GHD like to address any of the issues that were brought up? No? Okay. Moving forward, upcoming meetings, we have Environmental Commission tomorrow night, March 12th at 7:00 PM. Zoning Board on March 14th at 6:30 PM. Historic Preservation, March 19th at 6:00 PM. Planning Board, March 21st at 6:30 PM.